Okay, will the Paducah City Commission please have a roll call and come to order?
Commissioner Abraham.
Present.
Commissioner Galt.
Present.
Commissioner Rhodes.
Here.
Commissioner Wilson. Mayor Kaler.
And I should say that they are off doing the city's business at the Chamber fly into Washington, DC, so they are AWOL, but they are doing good works. Commissioner Abraham, would you give us the indication, please?
Well, sir. Father which art in heaven, thank you so much for this beautiful day. Father, you continually show us ways to appreciate your goodness, meaning that we could fully appreciate today having gone through last week when the heat index was 118. So, we trip over miracles every day. Thank you for the opportunities to serve. Thank you for the opportunities that you continually give us. Help us not only receive knowledge, but understand it and have the wisdom to administer these things we ask in your name. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to its republic on which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. All right, Mr. City Manager, is there, are there any deletions or additions?
There are none.
All right, good deal. Commissioner Abraham, if you will, tell us about the minutes.
I move that the reading of the minutes for September 6, 2016, City Commission meeting be waived and that the minutes of said meetings prepared by the city clerk be approved as written.
Commissioner Abraham.
Aye.
Commissioner Galt.
Aye.
Mayor Pro Tem Rhodes.
Aye. Okay. All right, we have a resolution and Commissioner Galt.
I move that a resolution entitled Resolution of the Board of Commissioners of the City of Paducah, Kentucky relating to the issuance by the Kentucky Economic Development Finance Authority of Revenue Bonds to finance and refinance, among other things, costs incurred by Baptist Healthcare System, Inc. in constructing and acquiring certain hospital facilities in the city be adopted.
Second. Aye.
Commissioner Galt.
Aye.
Mayor Pro Tem Rhodes.
Aye. All right, Michelle, would you like to, we have Michelle Hayden with us tonight. From Batson, would you like to say anything or have a few moments?
Yeah, I'm Tara McGuire with Stalkin and Ogden, and I'm counsel for Baptist Health.
Oh, sure.
Sure.
Hi, Tara McGuire with Stalkin and Ogden, and I'm counsel for Baptist Health. This resolution is in relation to Baptist Health obtaining bonds from the Kentucky Economic Development Finance Authority. The total amount for statewide is going to be up to $250 million, but here in Paducah, they are going to be spending about $40 million, 15 of which is going to go to refinancing some prior projects and 25 of which is going to go to financing some new projects. So, we appreciate your help in moving this forward, and we can't wait to make some improvements here in Paducah.
Okay.
Thank you.
Any questions? Thank you. Okay. Commissioner Abraham, the R and F documents.
I move that the following documents and bids be received and filed. Documents certificates of liability insurance, Crop Construction, Inc., Tri-State Fire Protection, Inc., bids for Police Department, Wilson Office Solutions, Cubicle by Designs, Happy, Howard D. Happy, Kentucky Correctional Industries, Better Business Systems, SDB Commercial Interiors, bids for Parks Department, Noble Park Restaurant Facilities, MB Lawson Construction. These were the bids and this indicates we've got the contract.
Yes.
Okay. All right, these were the bids, MB Lawson Construction, Pinnacle, Inc., Harbor Construction, Everett Strand Construction, Inc., Youngblood Escavating and Contract, and Wilkins Construction Company, Inc., and the bid went to Lawson Construction.
Second.
All right. You want to?
Commissioner Abraham.
Aye.
Commissioner Galt.
Aye.
Mayor Pro Tem Rhodes.
Aye. Okay, under personnel, Commissioner Galt, you want to talk about personal actions?
Upon the recommendation of the city manager, the Board of Commissioners of the City of Paducah ordered the personnel changes on the attached list be approved.
Second.
Good evening, Mayor Pro Tem, Commissioners, busy list wrapping up some of the seasonal work, some of our routine moving of positions around in the fire department. Would ask you to pay a note down the second page, the promotion of Cheryl Chino from grants administrator to the planner to position represents a significant move forward for us in the planning department, and we're glad we could find a qualified candidate inside the organization to take on this important work.
All right, any questions?
No, sir.
Okay.
Commissioner Abraham.
Aye.
Commissioner Galt.
Aye.
Mayor Pro Tem Rhodes.
Aye. Okay. Commissioner Abraham?
I move that a municipal order entitled, a municipal order amending Section D, Information Technology and H Engineering Public Works Department of the fiscal year 2016-2017, position and pay schedule for the full-time employees of the City of Paducah, Kentucky be adopted.
Second.
This action does two minor things. First, in the IT department, it renames one position. If you recall, when we had Ben Peterson working for us, he gravitated in the reduction in force action we had in 2010, and he moved from planning to the IT department, but he wanted to keep his planner title with him, and it certainly has worked out. He's gone on to Bowling Green's Planning Director. It's really not appropriate for us moving forward, so that one is just simply a title change for that vacant position. The other two is to, it's personnel neutral. We have two vacant, we have a vacant position in the street department operator, want to reclassify that to a right-of-way maintenance person, so we'll reduce that from a total of four to three, and it was vacant anyway, it doesn't affect any persons, and create that vacancy in a different classification.
Fighting stuff. Okay.
Okay, Commissioner Abraham.
Aye.
Commissioner Galt.
Aye.
Mayor Pro Tem Rhodes.
Aye. Back to Commissioner Galt, who'll give it rest.
I move that a municipal order entitled, a municipal order authorizing the application for a 2017 Kentucky litter abatement grant through the Kentucky Division of Waste Management for the Engineering Public Works Department Street Litter Abatement Program be adopted.
Second.
Well, I don't know if anybody's going to speak about this. Steve, do you want to speak about this? The good news is it's $13,000, or $13,500, no cash match. My favorite kind of grant. No cash match, that's great. So, tell us all about it. Is there anything, does anybody know anything about it?
It's pretty self-explanatory.
Very. Okay.
Commissioner Abraham.
Aye.
Commissioner Galt.
Aye.
Mayor Pro Tem Rhodes.
Aye. Moving around laws, okay. Mr. Abraham, you want to talk about the next thing there?
Let's do it.
Let's do it.
I move that a municipal order entitled, a municipal order authorizing, directing the finance director to transfer $27,800 from the commission contingency fund to the Noble Park Tennis Court restroom account or the Noble Park Tennis Court restroom facility project be adopted.
Second.
The long-awaited.
The long-awaited, and it was, basically, it's a funding shortfall from what was raised outside and what we already had in our coffers, and this is the difference.
How long have we been working on this one?
Jane Gamble's been working on it about 10 years.
[laughing].
But the actual fundraising has probably been three, in three here.
Where will it be built? By the tennis courts? Is it?
Yes, right by the tennis courts.
Is it this side, or Riverside, or West Side, or?
It's going to be just on the west side of the courts.
Okay.
You'll see them before you get to the courts.
Okay. All right.
Commissioner Abraham.
Aye.
Commissioner Galt.
Aye.
Mayor Pro Tem Rhodes.
Aye. Okay. Next, we have ordinance adoptions, and these are ordinances we've already spoken about, and so unless there's any, I mean, please interrupt me as you all get to read these if you want to speak about these. So, Commissioner Galt, if you'll go first.
I move that the Board of Commissioners adopt an ordinance entitled, an ordinance of the City of Paducah, Kentucky, authorizing and approving the First Amendment to an agreement for transfer, transport, and disposal of municipal solid waste between the City of Paducah and Freedom Waste Services, LLC, and authorizing the execution of First Amendment. This ordinance is summarized as follows, that the City of Paducah hereby authorizes the mayor to execute a First Amendment to the contract with Freedom Waste Service, LLC, a Kentucky limited liability company, for long-term transfer station services, the transport and disposal of all municipal solid waste in a safe and accessible citizen drop-off area for the deposition of recyclable products. This amendment approves the location of the transfer station site and the plans for development of the transfer station and documents, agreement, and understanding as to the delay liquidated damages.
Jeff, do you want to say about that or anything in particular since it's?
Well, it's an extension of the contract with the invocation of some penalties, and as Rick mentioned last week, about half of the penalty days of what, excuse me, about half of the extension days of what was requested by the contractor, meaning the other half is going into penalty at the amount of $1,000 per day, so it's some $20,000, $29,000 in penalties that'll be paid by the contractor.
Okay. Lot of steel about there. Looks like all the major steel's up.
For the transfer stations?
This afternoon.
Good.
Okay. Should we call the roll?
Commissioner Abraham.
Aye.
Commissioner Galt.
Aye.
Mayor Pro Tem Rhodes.
Aye. Okay. Commissioner Abraham?
I move that the Board of Commissioners adopt an ordinance entitled, an ordinance extending the boundary of the City of Paducah, Kentucky, by finalizing the annexation of certain property lying adjacent to the corporate limits of the City of Paducah and defining accurately the boundary of said property to be included within the said corporate limits. This ordinance is summarized as follows. The City of Paducah hereby approves the final annexation of certain tracts of property contingents to the present city limits located at 6125 Blendville Road and 1592 New Holt Road containing 8.313 acres, more or less.
Second.
Call the roll?
Commissioner Abraham.
Aye.
Commissioner Galt.
Aye.
Mayor Pro Tem Rhodes.
Aye. Okay. Commissioner Galt?
I move that the Board of Commissioners adopt an ordinance entitled, an ordinance providing for the closing of North 29th Street between Trimble Street and Clay Street and between Clay Street and Harrison Street, and authorizing the mayor to execute all documents necessary to complete the transfer of property. This ordinance is summarized as follows, that the City of Paducah hereby authorizes the closing of North 29th Street between Trimble Street and Clay Street and between Clay Street and Harrison Street, and authorizes the mayor to execute all documents necessary to complete the transfer of property to the property owners in or abutting the public ways to be closed.
Second.
Okay, and this is the property in the California court apartments. Okay.
Commissioner Abraham.
Aye.
Commissioner Galt.
Aye.
Mayor Pro Tem Rhodes.
Aye. Mr. Abraham?
I move that the Board of Commissioners adopt an ordinance entitled, an ordinance providing for the closing of Yopp Street between 3220 and 3300 Wayne Sullivan Drive, and authorizes the mayor to execute all documents necessary to complete the transfer of properties. This ordinance is summarized as follows, that the City of Paducah hereby authorizes closing a portion of Yopp Street between 3220 and 3300 Wayne Sullivan Drive, and authorizes the mayor to execute all documents necessary to complete the transfer of property to the property owners in or abutting public ways to be closed.
Second.
For just what it's worth, I'd challenge anybody to go find Yopp Street because it doesn't actually exist. It's a curb cut and a dirt field behind Walmart. And I spent some time trying to find it.
Were you looking for it like Pokemon?
Well, I felt like, yeah, I felt like I had Pokemon Go, I could probably found it, but there was no street sign, nothing, but it's, but we're going to close it, though I'm not sure it's very difficult. I'm sorry, I digress.
That's okay. All right.
Commissioner Abraham.
Aye.
Commissioner Galt.
Aye.
Mayor Pro Tem Rhodes.
Aye. All right, and back we go. Commissioner Galt?
I move that the Board of Commissioners adopt an ordinance entitled, an ordinance authorizing the purchase of dumpsters, lids, and replacement parts for 2016-2017 for utilization by commercial businesses within the City of Paducah and authorizing the mayor to execute a contract for same. This ordinance is summarized as follows, that the City of Paducah authorizes the finance director to pay an amount not to exceed $70,000 for fiscal year 2016-2017 to Municipal Equipment, Inc., for the purchase of various sized dumpsters, lids, and replacement parts for the Solid Waste Division of Engineering Public Works.
Second.
And yes, I'll even go.
Commissioner Abraham.
Aye.
Commissioner Galt.
Aye.
Mayor Pro Tem Rhodes.
Aye. All right, and back to dumpsters, dumpsters, all right, and, oh, here's the one about the rollouts. That's mine, that's mine, but that's all right.
I'm just asking.
They're not attractive, but I guess they're more durable.
All right. I move that the Board of Commissioners adopt an ordinance entitled, an ordinance authorizing the purchase of rollout containers from Totor, Inc., for the Engineering Public Works Solid Waste Division. This ordinance is summarized as follows, that the City of Paducah hereby authorizes the finance director to make payment to Totor, Inc., for the purchase of rollout refuge containers, lids, and replacement parts for the 2016-2017 fiscal year in an amount not to exceed the city's budgeted amount of $60,000. These containers and accessories will be used by customers within the city limits of Paducah served by the Solid Waste Division Engineering Public Works Department. This purchase is made in compliance with Kentucky State Purchasing Contract.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Commissioner Abraham.
Aye.
Commissioner Galt.
Aye.
Mayor Pro Tem Rhodes.
Aye. All right, and Commissioner Galt?
I move that the Board of Commissioners adopt an ordinance entitled, an ordinance accepting the bid of Paducah Ford for sale to the City of 10 2017 police pursuit rated vehicles for use by the Paducah Police Department, authorizing the possible purchase of up to two additional police vehicles prior to June 30, 2017, and authorizing the mayor to execute a contract for same. This ordinance is summarized as follows, the City of Paducah accepts the bid of Paducah Ford in the amount of $357,845 for the purchase of 10 2017 police pursuit rated vehicles for the use by the Paducah Police Department, approves the purchase of up to two additional police vehicles at the unit bid price submitted in the bid, in the event the city may need to purchase additional vehicles prior to June 30, 2017, and hereby authorizes the mayor to execute a contract with Paducah Ford for the purchase of the vehicles.
Second.
Okay.
Commissioner Abraham.
Aye.
Commissioner Galt.
Aye.
Mayor Pro Tem Rhodes.
Aye. Okay. Commissioner Abraham, Port Security.
Yes. I move that the Board of Commissioners adopt an ordinance entitled, an ordinance authorizing and directing the mayor to execute all documents relating thereto with the United States Department of Homeland Security for a 2016 port security grant and authorizing the mayor, the planning department, to accept the grant through the port security online portal. This ordinance is summarized as follows, the mayor is hereby authorized and directed to execute all documents necessary with the United States of Homeland Security to obtain a 2016 port security grant in the amount of $14,678 for the purchase of three security cameras to monitor the flood wall. This grant does not require any local cash or in-kind match.
Second.
Call the roll?
Commissioner Abraham.
Aye.
Commissioner Galt.
Aye.
Mayor Pro Tem Rhodes.
Aye. Commissioner Galt?
I move that the Board of Commissioners adopt an ordinance entitled, an ordinance ratifying the mayor's execution of a 2016-2017 Kentucky Highway Safety Program reimbursement grant award with the Kentucky Office of Highway Safety, a division of the Kentucky Transportation Cabinet. This ordinance is summarized as follows, that the City of Paducah hereby authorizes the mayor to execute 2016-2017 Kentucky Highway Safety Program reimbursement grant award with the Kentucky Office of Highway Safety, a division of the Kentucky Transportation Cabinet, in the amount of $25,450 for overtime hours associated with the saturation patrols, including fuel costs. This program does not require any local cash or in-kind match.
Second.
Madam Clerk?
Commissioner Abraham.
Aye.
Commissioner Galt.
Aye.
Mayor Pro Tem Rhodes.
Aye. Okay, now we're going to have ordinance introduction, so we can start to ask questions again. It's expected. Okay, Commissioner Abraham?
I move that the Board of Commissioners introduce an ordinance entitled, an ordinance of the City of Paducah, Kentucky, approving a promissory note, extension, agreement, and addendum to real estate mortgage among the City of Paducah, Kentucky, the County of McCracken, Kentucky, and the Greater Paducah Economic Development Council with respect to a public project generally known as Riverport West, and authorizing the execution of same. This ordinance is summarized as follows, this ordinance authorizes the City of Paducah, Kentucky, the city, to approve a promissory note extension agreement and addendum to real estate mortgage agreement by and between the City of Paducah, Kentucky, the County of McCracken, Kentucky, and the Greater Paducah Economic Development Council. Pursuant to the agreement, the city and the county agree to extend the maturity date of the, uh, what is this?
Indebtedness.
Indebtedness due and owing by GPD C, by G P E D C until the city and the county until June 30, 2020, which indebtedness are evidenced by promissory notes dated September 18, 2007 in the original principal amount of $600,000, and promissory notes dated December 19, 2008, and are secured by real estate mortgages. This ordinance approves the form of the agreement presented to the Board of Commissioners of the city, and such changes therein shall not be adverse to the city and may be approved by the mayor and city clerk.
Second.
Well, John, I'm glad you're here.
Okay.
Even though, Richard, I mean, Commissioner, you did a masterful job, but if you would clear that up for the audience, the news media, and the rest of us.
Everybody else. I don't know about you all, but this light is going to give you a sunburn. It is so hot.
It's cooking.
Yes, it is.
It cooks.
Well, a number of years ago, the city loaned GPD C funds to acquire some acreage in conjunction with an economic development project. The exact was in 2007, and it was, I believe, the coal-to liquid project many years ago. That didn't happen. The loan has been, it was initially, I think, a six-month loan, then it was another six-month loan, and they thought it was going to be a quick turnaround. It didn't happen, didn't happen, and so we finally extended it. And it actually expired in June of '15, last summer, summer for this one. And we've decided it would probably be wise for us to go ahead and not call the loan because I'm sure they don't have the cash to pay us at this point, anyway. We are fully collateralized by the real estate itself, and we are recommending that we simply extend the loan another five years out, which would be June 30 of 2020. In your packet, you should have, that, there's a lot of history with this, and so I took the history on all the ordinances, and I put it on one single sheet, a chronology, so you could follow it, and that's how I, how I put it together, too. And so that's, in a nutshell, what this is.
Okay. Who actually holds, does GPD C, I presume, hold title to this piece of property?
I believe they do.
Okay.
At least we have collateral to it.
Yes.
They better have it.
The, what's, how many acres?
I think the whole package together originally was 1,000, but I think the loan that we gave was 130 acres. And also, we probably need to point out, too, that the city and the county made equal valued loans at the time. We both, we did it together.
I guess it'd be easy maybe to characterize this as sort of a, nothing really changes, it's just sort of getting our paperwork and our documents in order.
That's exactly right. In fact, I had made a note, and I forgot to tell you this, it didn't change anything except for the due date. Everything's exactly the same. We don't lose our collateral or anything. And so when that property gets sold, then we get our money back.
All right. So, I'm ready. Get a plant, get a check.
That's the theory.
All right. Any other questions, comments? City Manager? You okay? All right. Thank you, Miss Perkins. All right. All right, Commissioner Galt?
I move that the Board of Commissioners introduce an ordinance entitled, an ordinance accepting the bid of MP Lawson Construction, LLC, for the Noble Park Tennis Courts Restroom Facility Construction Project, and authorizing the mayor to execute a contract for such construction and change Order 1 to such contract allowing the city to make direct purchase of the modular restroom facility. This ordinance is summarized as follows, this ordinance authorizes the mayor to enter into contract with MP Lawson Construction, LLC, a Kentucky limited liability company, in the amount of $152,936 for the Noble Park Tennis Courts Restroom Facility Construction Project, and subsequently authorizes the mayor to enter to change Order 1 to said contract, reducing the contract price due to contractor to the amount of $61,250.06. Further, the ordinance authorizes the Director of Park Services to make a direct purchase of the modular restroom facility from Hunter Knapp Shield Company for $86,637.
Second.
This may be the first change order in the history of the universe that saved money. Always that they cost you money.
This allows us to save the 6% sales tax on the purchase of the modular building.
Good deal. Thank you. Any other questions? All right. All right. Gee whiz, we've come to the end of the, the end of the thing. There you are, cleanup man.
I move that the Board of-
Apparently Assistant Chief.
I move that the Board of Commissioners introduce an ordinance entitled, an ordinance accepting the proposal of Wilson Office Solutions for the purchase of furniture for the Paducah, for the Police Department Annex located at 1410 Broadway, and authorizes the mayor to execute a contract for same. This ordinance is summarized as follows, that the City of Paducah accepts the bid of Wilson Office Solutions in the amount not to exceed $42,127.13 for the purchase of furniture for the Police Department Annex located at 1410 Broadway, and authorizes the mayor to execute a contract for same.
Can I have a second? Second.
Welcome. Well, I don't know if there's any questions. I don't really have anything for the chief. I'd like to thank Steve for helping us put together the RFP for it, though.
It's moving along nicely.
Yeah.
Looks good.
That's looking good.
Local company.
Yeah, we're very pleased with it so far, so.
Looks like you got good competitive bids.
Yes.
Very competitive, in fact.
Six bidders.
All right.
All right.
Thanks so much.
Might mention that once the project is complete, including the furniture in place, plans have begun for a public unveiling and tours and that sort of thing, so I'll look forward to that.
All right. Thank you. All right, Mr. City Manager?
I'd like to take my time tonight and ask Rick Murphy to come forward and give the Commission an update on some of our capital projects that are progressing.
Mayor- Uh, Mayor, or Mayor Pro Tim and Commission, I'm excited to report this evening that, uh, if you've been out in the Oliver Church Road area, uh, the three-lane portion has received a base course of asphalt, not for the entire length, but for the majority of the length, uh, of that area, and that project is coming together nicely. Uh, we originally projected they would be finished, entirely finished, mid-October, but the July rains and the August rains that we've had have pushed that back, and we look forward to that project being done or completed before Thanksgiving, so we're, we're looking at maybe an additional month in there to get that finished up, uh, for the shopping season, and hopefully everything will return to normal, uh, and much better than normal. Uh, I don't know if you all recall what Oliver Church Road used to look like before the project, but it wasn't wide enough for the traffic, it was handling in very much, uh, a needed project. Uh, moving forward to the riverfront, um, it's really taken a lot of shape. Um, the earthwork is being completed. Uh, I think folks will start to see, uh, a lot different scope of that project, if you will, uh, because you're gonna see the massive area that's being created out there, uh, and we will have, I guess, the ability to, uh, I guess, support, uh, our upcoming event, event barbecue. Uh, things will go on as planned with that, uh, but as you go down there, uh, it still is a construction site, uh, but we do have a few photos that the City Manager has, uh, that was taken from the water, uh, and of the revetment area, and it, it really looks nice from the water. Uh, myself and Steve Doolittle were down there before the meeting, and actually, we saw five boats going by, all as a big group, and I would have loved to have had something for them to tie up and come join us, uh, up in the City of Paducah, but, uh, they kept going, but they'll be here again. Uh, also, uh, you all referenced the police annex. Uh, our Engineering Public Works, uh, Department have supported that project, uh, to keep that in budget. Uh, we're also doing a lot of, uh, site work around the project, so once the project's complete, it will be a completely completed project, uh, and some additional work that we're doing there at the Police Department as well. Uh, the Police Department, unfortunately, has been somewhat, uh, a side of ground zero. Uh, every utility, uh, we've had Kentucky Avenue work that has taken place once, we've had Kentucky Avenue work, some, uh, I guess corrective work taking place, we've had Paducah Water pass through the Police Department parking lot, we've had Atmos Gas disturb the Police Department parking lot, we've had, uh, anything known to man, every utility company seems to think that that's the place to go to work, plus we're working there as well. Uh, the Police Department has been very cooperative and understanding, uh, it is inconvenient for them, but I mean, we've been working well together, and we look forward to having that project complete, uh, and for the unveiling, as, as the City Manager has spoken, so, um, that's where we are with those projects. If there's any other projects out there that you may have questions for, I'm happy to address any of those that you might have. Yes, sir?
The six poles that swing from the gangway down river.
Yes, sir.
On its face one V. Tell us about those.
Those poles are what we refer to as spud poles. Uh, the transient dock itself will be attached to those, so as the river rises or falls, the, it, they won't, the, the transient dock stays stationary, it only has a vertical movement. Uh, and some people might ask, and it has been asking me, uh, how, how did you determine their height? Um, the height of those, uh, spud poles and all the pile groups down there are a foot and a half taller than the flood wall, and you might ask why? Okay, uh, in the event that we do have that catastrophic event, uh, let's say, you know, uh, if you talk to the Corps, they say that all flood walls will overtop, meaning that the river waters will exceed the height of the wall. Well, we, we, uh, I guess wrestled back and forth with what's the termination height of those, and if it's anything less than the height of the wall, then actually, whatever improvements you put there that will float when they need to float, have the opportunity to float over the top and go downstream. So, uh, after careful consideration, I'm like, well, what's two or three feet? Let's get two or three feet, uh, more, and that if the waters exceed the height of the flood wall and come over into the City of Paducah, if the dock goes downstream, we have bigger priorities inside the Paducah, inside the City of Paducah. So, uh, that's, that's kind of the way, uh, that decision was determined. Could they have been shorter? Yes, but in two thousand and eleven, we were reminded what Mother Nature can do, uh, so, uh, fortunately, we're protected to that. Again, if the water overtops and come into the City of Paducah, we have a super huge problem, and that dock will be the least of our problems.
Yes. Okay. Question?
Rick, as far as all of the apparatus, the platform, gangway dock, and all that, uh, little update on where that's at in terms of design production?
Currently, uh, we have what we refer to as the platforms. Um, you, you'll see pile groupings, uh, Mayor Pro Tim Rhodes referenced the pilings that are like fence posts out in the river, where there's groupings of, of three sets of four piles with a collar around them, and, uh, actually, that's a, uh, a structure that floats, or excuse me, supports the flotation for the gangways to make your way from the land to the transient dock. Those, um, uh, floating structures are under construction. Our, our gangways are under construction, and we're getting our, uh, transient dock under construction, uh, and that work is supposed to be, and they're supposed to be delivered in November, mid-November, uh, for that. And once they're delivered, obviously, we're not complete, uh, because we have to, uh, connect all the utilities, um, for, you have to, uh, extend your fuel lines down underneath those structures and network them through so we can have our pumps and stuff down on the transient dock, our electricity for our pedestals, our, our city water, our, uh, sewage pump out, for example, transient boats need to offload, uh, their black water, uh, for that, so we will be extending those, uh, facilities after those other infrastructure items have arrived.
Uh, last thing I want to mention, uh, we've had a couple meetings at the staff level. Thanks, Rick, as a follow-up to the next steps workshop from the community survey, trying to kind of sort through the list of items that, uh, the Commission and staff came up with, and I think we're, we're there, uh, in terms of, uh, identifying approaches to them. Uh, some of those, I think we can, um, address at the staff level, others, we want to expand the participation beyond staff, and, and some include commissioners, so we'll be getting something out in the next week or two to you about opportunities to, uh, become involved in, in some of the, uh, uh, efforts that we'll put towards some of the items that, uh, were on the list, uh, of things that we want to consider, uh, for, uh, improvements in one form or another to what we're doing, or, uh, or, or how we go about doing things. So, uh, look for that in the next couple of weeks. The IT project, uh, is still, uh, ramping up, but continues to be, uh, I think, well-received and, and enthusiastically participated in, um, as people look forward to all of the, uh, good things that'll come from the implementation in terms of increased capabilities and efficiencies and customer service and all that. So, Michelle continues to, uh, do a very good job at that, she's very well-suited to that, I, I don't know that we could have found someone better than her, uh, for that, for that particular role, so, uh, everything is going very well with that project. That's all I have.
All right, thank you. Shall we let Mr. Abraham have the floor now to?
What?
Well, I just noticed that you usually like your natty self.
Oh, this?
I thought I was-
Yeah, we'll talk about this in a minute. I, I have a comment, though. Uh, I just want to comment on, uh, there's, it's been a lot of conversation regarding our dog ordinance, and whether to muzzle or not muzzle, um, depending on, uh, just from the conversation, you know, where you are in the city, uh, there were, there's obviously there was a reason for the, the ordinance, um, whether it was a what-if type of situation, uh, I get that. I am a dog lover. Blue is my guy. He's a blue tick hound dog, and I didn't realize till I married my wife, I grew up in Tennessee, and there was always a dog, but he was always out back. I didn't realize till I met Cindy that the dog was not happy out back, he wanted to be in, and my mom and my grandma wouldn't have, wouldn't have it. Well, thirty-three years later, I've, we've had several dogs, and they all have been house dogs, and, uh, so it was obvious, you know, is he, either I was gonna have to change my attitude toward dogs, or it wouldn't have been thirty-three years, obviously. So, that's okay, I, I love, I love my animals. However, I, I want to say this, um, when-
And your wife.
True. When we talk about, when we talk about permitted events, um, there's a, there's an etiquette with, with your animal that you know, uh, but, but sometimes when you're in a crowd, a lot of people, for instance, like Barbecue on the River is coming up, and, uh, people are unpredictable, uh, and it's, it's really, it's, whether it's Barbecue on the River or it's the art festival in Lower Town, um, I'm not so sure how happy dogs are in those type of, of environments. Uh, so, uh, I know we have events where we have a, uh, out at the dog park or wherever where we have dogs, folks dress up their animals, uh, and, and if we want to, you know, waive that, that's fine, becau-, obviously, it's, it's an event like that, but, um, I don't know what's, where that or, that part of the ordinance is gonna go, but just as a pet owner, uh, I kind of understand that that particular situation is as much protection, uh, for my dog as it is for, uh, people there, because, I mean, I love Blue, he's a great dog, but if I'm downtown and it's mass people and someone jerks his tail, he's gonna turn around and react, so, um, I'm just, just wanted to put that out there, when you have a lot of people in very tight spaces, um, I'm just thinking about, uh, is that really where you want your animal?
Which is another approach some communities have taken to the issue, is simply disallowing them in certain events.
Right. Oh, now, for the shirt. Those of you who don't know, this is, unfortunately for me, has become an annual event. Um, it was my idea.
Mayor Pro Tim asked if I wanted to say anything, I said, well, it depends on what he says.
Oh, hey, I'm a Timmy guy, but I'm a fan of the game. We've gotten our butt kicked the last eleven years, and I, I shared this with Commissioner Gault. If I am fortunate enough to win this election in November, I will miss her, because she's not coming back, but I will not miss this, right? Win or lose, I won't have to wear this anymore, so I will, uh, I will, at Christmas time, I will, if I'm elected again, I will gift wrap this and send it to you with a note.
And it's just her size, too.
That's all I have.
We've had a lot of good fun with that, actually.
Well, you have.
Well, I can't wait till it takes up the challenge.
I think I'm just gonna keep my mouth shut next time, just, just leave it alone.
Commissioner Gault?
I'm good.
Would you like to use a day's on anything?
No, no.
All right. Anybody else? I don't think we have any visitors. I think all of our visitors are from the media. Okay. If there's nothing else, Corps is adjourned. Thank you.